Okay, thank you. And for the record, Trustee Silver has also joined us and we'll add her to the roll call. Okay, so what we're going to do here, again, thank you, Dr. Endo Jonas. This is our study session for the FMP, the Facilities Master Plan. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bush. Hold on, I see a hand raised. Alex.
Before you do, Mr. President, I do have one item of public comment. Would you like to take that now or another time?
Let's, I think now would be the appropriate time, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, let's go with public comment. Thank you.
Okay. This is public comment from Desiree Hernandez, who leads our Quest Center at PCC. Reads, "On behalf of the Quest Center Coordinator Desiree Hernandez, the Supreme Court is expected to make a decision on DACA any day now before the end of June. This is an uncertain time for many of our undocumented students, and it is extremely important that our students feel supported during this time as we had many undocumented students drop out of school when DACA was rescinded in 2017. The Quest Center will be hosting a virtual town hall within 48 hours after the decision is made, where immigration attorney David Lawler will be providing in-depth clarity on the decision and answer any questions that our community may have. We welcome PCC leaders, staff, faculty, and students to join in solidarity. Please subscribe to Quest's YouTube channel, which is under PCC Quest, where the live town hall will take place. Whatever the outcome, Quest is here to support. Dream come due."
Okay. Mr. Buckle, I thank you for sharing that public comment. And if, you know, if I could ask you to forward that link to the trustees and others in the PCC community that would be interested to attend that.
Certainly will, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and without further ado, we'll turn this over to Dr. Mike Bush.
Take it away.
Thank you, Trustee Austin. I'm going to share my screen. And I have to confess, I'm lousy at Zoom. And I also get wrapped up into the presentation. But feel free to interrupt me with questions. Plus, we have a couple, Alex had had me insert some pause screens because I get too wrapped up that actually remind me to take questions. So, but please just interrupt and we'll get through this. Okay? Okay, I did that part so far.
Yay. Yay, Mike.
Yeah. Lucky me. Okay. So this is pretty much the same as the presentation. Let's see, I can't make it go, how come? I guess I'm not that good. Let me try it again. See if I can make this one work. There we go. Everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So today, we're going to review the Facility Master Plan. It's pretty much the same presentation as the Town Hall, although I received some constructive feedback on that presentation and made a couple modifications on this. Then I want to review the cost and funding of the plan in broad sweeps. And then I want to talk about bridge financing of the Seraphim Building. So, as you know, the scope of the Facilities Master Plan was to assess our current facilities, update enrollment projections, focus on career communities. That's how our college has implemented guided pathways. And the timeframe was from October 2019 through February 2020. We had over 60 participants across the campus working on the plan and giving input. And we also had our consultants at HGA had about 15 people assisting us. The deliverables are to outline the current state, which is in the document, the guiding principles, plus the data that was used, and then make a recommendation to future state of three campuses, or actually four, the Colorado Campus, Foothill Campus, Rosemead, and PCC Northwest. The plan could be, is on our website at the FMP, and there's hard copies in our library when it opens again. Okay? To assess the current state, we looked at enrollment growth. And it's a modest enrollment growth, and it's not aspirational. We looked at the career communities, how they're currently laid out on the campus, looked at existing facilities, existing outdoor space, infrastructure, which is, most of it's buried and we don't see, except for Mr. Austin, who went in the tunnel. So he's actually seeing some of it. And then parking and transportation, wayfinding, and then sustainability. We developed guiding principles through town halls. We also did surveys. We have, we met with the Executive Cabinet several times, focus groups on specific subject matters, met three times with Academic Senate, and we met with the Student Government. We did it in the initial, when we first started the plan a couple years ago. And then most recently, they met with the ASG to go through the plan. The guiding principles that were established clarify cluster career communities, clarify and cluster career communities. We started to speak to it as precincts, where things would be located on campus, increase and enhance space for study and socializing, expand food services, strengthen school identity, improve wayfinding, and increase parking. We were able to do most of those. We did not increase the parking. Is there any questions? Okay, I'll move on. So when we look at our existing career communities, you can see that they're spread out across the campus. Our STEM is in blue, and you can see it's literally in all four corners of the campus. We have health and wellness that's spread out. And it's also a little bit over at Foothill Campus. And one of the goals is for us to cluster the career communities in an area. We looked at enrollment growth. We looked at a modest enrollment growth over the 10-year period. And we then, based off of what the Chancellor's Office is saying, we can grow about a percent and a half a year, meaning that's all they'll pay for is a growth at that rate. And then we also asked the deans to look at the programs and determine what they felt their growth were in the programs or the decreases in the programs. And you can see that some of our programs are growing much faster, like non-credit, as opposed to things like the languages, which is actually decreasing slightly. But after we compiled all the individual data from the deans, Dr. Juney worked with the deans, we then overlaid it on our original, and it's trending the same. So program growth then, for facility folks, equates to square footage. We call it assignable square footage. So this diagram, the plain color is our existing assignable square footage, and the dotted is the additional square footage that will be needed to accommodate the programs in 10 years. Keep in mind, we're always looking 10 years out. So in order to accommodate the growth, there was recommendations that HGA made. First of all, they're recommending renovating R and C buildings, to build an additional STEM Health Science Building of 75,000 to 100,000, replace the Student Services Building with a 60,000 to 70,000 square foot building, and to build a new academic building of 125,000 to 150,000 square feet. We would do selective renovations in the D and E building. We would consolidate department offices and then create adjunct office space, consolidate and improve athletics/recreation on the campus, and renovation of non-teaching spaces to create student lounge and study in each major building. And then renovate the Planetarium in the Boiler House, which are two historical buildings on campus. So what does that mean totally as far as growing the campus? Currently, the Colorado Campus has 2.2 million square feet. The Seraphim Building, and I'm going to discuss a demolition scheme later in the presentation, but we're looking at, the Seraphim is roughly 91,000 square feet, and the new one would be 100,000. The Women's Gym's 43,000. Marvin Howard Building's 46,000. The new STEM Building, which would be more square footage, 75,000. Student Services is currently 33,000, and the need is 70,000. New Academic Building would be 150,000 square feet. So we would be demolishing 213,000 and then building new 395,000. So it's an increase of almost 200,000 square feet, or a little less than 10% of the assignable square feet right now. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So I was, I'm just thinking, I know we had some challenges with the Seraphim Building, and I know we're giving that STEM Building that we're going to build. The issue that we had as we went through our deal to get the Seraphim Building approved was that it was smaller, it was not going to fit all of the programs. Now, are we going to compensate with that by the other, having the STEM Building? Or how is that going to be compensated to be able to fit all of the Health Science group in there?
Correct. The main push in our STEM program is the sciences. We'll be able to accommodate the Health Sciences in the Seraphim Building, but there isn't enough for all the chemistry and biology. And that's an area that has grown, a programs that have grown on our campus, and we anticipate they'll continue to grow. So that's why the recommendation for a new STEM Building is 75,000 square feet.
Okay, so that's what we will compensate?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It was a real tug-of-war until we, we just came to the realization, there's not enough space. We're trying to put too much in the 100,000 square foot building.
Thank you.
I have a question also.
Okay.
So Mike, I'm sorry, I don't have my FMP book with me. But so when you say the new STEAM is 75,000 total square feet added, so is that, we're tearing down that temporary, those temporary science buildings? We're relocating those modules, is that what we're doing?
We're going to abandon the modules. They're at, and I'll speak about this later when we talk about demolition, but their buildings have a life cycle. And we either have to reinvest in the life cycle and modernize the building, or we have to replace the building. And those modulars, we looked at reusing them for like interim housing, but they're built as laboratories. And then we'd have to switch them over into classrooms. And they're, we don't think we can move them. They're that old. So we're going to look at abandoning the relocatables.
Okay.
They're only good for 20 years before they start falling apart.
Right, yeah, and we had bought them used anyway. So when you say that we're only touching about 10% of the assignable space, I'm not sure I know what that means.
Okay. Good question. We're expanding our assignable space. So if we look at this graph, all those dotted areas will, is about a 10% growth in assignable space. So we're, some of it is replacing into-life buildings, and some of it is increasing our assignable square footage.
Thank you.
One of the issues of the Colorado Campus, actually all our campuses, is they're very dense urban campuses. So if we get too aspirational, thinking we're going to expand by 20%, 30%, what is that going to do to the footprints of buildings? And how high would we have to go? So this is only expanding our assignable square feet by 10%, which would accommodate the growth that we're forecasting for the 10 years.
Mike? Mike, on the page that we're looking at, and the, is the removal or demolition of the temporary science labs noted?
It is not.
On the chart where you showed the removal and the exchange?
No, no, it is not.
Yeah, that's the one I'm thinking of. So in some ways, the 75K new STEM is just replacing square footage that's now in that temporary cluster.
A good part of it.
And I don't know if it's worth redoing the slide to include that in here. It would be, it would probably be a truer comparison to show people that we're just replacing temporary on its last leg with permanent.
Correct. I'll look that up. But there is not 75,000 square feet of.
Oh, no, but there's something.
There's something. But I'll get it, and so we can calculate the delta. That's good input.
I see a question from Tammy.
Hi, just a little technicality. It says new STEAM, but you're saying STEM. So is it, because STEAM includes arts.
Correct. It's actually, the architect will use the word STEAM. It's intended to be a STEM Building. Although it's not designed yet. So if they wanted to move arts in, they could. But we have our arts building, which is housing our arts. When we look at our career communities, and I'll show that in just a second. But the arts would make more sense in the arts building and the new academic building.
Just another little question is that it seems like computer sciences are growing in many institutions, but it doesn't look like so much at PCC. Is that the analysis? Is there enough space allocated for computer sciences?
I believe so. And Dr. Juney could speak to that more. But we have computer sciences, we have cybersecurity, we have computer technology, which is more infrastructure and networking. And that's in the current IT Building and the math department right now. So we could show you where those are. They're in, and I'll probably get this wrong, Dr. Endo Jonas, but I believe they're in our business career community.
I believe so. I need Terry to tell us. But we also just hired another computer scientist faculty. So we're, it's definitely a growth area for us.
Yeah.
Dr. Juney, go ahead, please.
So, yeah, and Mike has kind of touched on it. In regard to computer science and computer education careers, it does fall in two of our divisions. It falls under computer science, and it also falls under CIS. And so, and the CIS program is in the Business and Engineering Technology Division. They're in the IT Building. And then the Computer Science Department is in the R Building. And both of those areas are growing. And they, you know, as Mike said, we don't, we haven't indicated exactly what's in all of these buildings, but through both the new academic building, as well as the new STEM Building, computer science and engineering will also get probably additional space because those are both areas that are growing.
Thank you.
I have a very quick question or request. Dr. Bush, if we could just add an additional column and also add in the letter name that we call these buildings, just for help of.
Okay.
Clarification, you know, because some people know them by their letter names and some by the longer name.
Yeah, we're trying to fix that, but just saying.
And that actually goes back to the 1930s, right after the Long Beach earthquake. They started giving them letters. But the Seraphim's the U in the UU Building. The Women's Gym is the W. The Marvin Howard is the V. There's no letter for the new building. And the Student Services is the L Building.
Thanks.
Terry has his hand up.
Terry's hand is up again.
If you could go back, Mike, to that slide. I wanted to comment on Trustee Martin's question about you not including the Science Village in the demolition. Part of it is actually because you're demolishing the Seraphim, which that 91,000 square feet is not currently used. Yeah. It, what would have been in there is in Science Village, as well as the Health Science Village on the Foothill Campus. And so in trying to do a cumulative addition, it gets complicated because that 91,000 is actually unusable space.
Yeah, I'll accept that point, and we'll let you decide how you want to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, Trustee Chen Lau, you're next, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I understand that this was all done pre-COVID-19. And given that, given that, you know, certainly we're in this whirlwind of disruptions and changing times. Do you think that this is going to, COVID-19, it's going to impact the planning of this? I know that we are looking at this 10 years out, you know, in the next few years. Do you anticipate enrollment projections are going to fluctuate? And how would that impact this?
Well, I'm hesitant to use such a dramatic recent event that has been very disruptive to change a long-term forecast. I still maintain, I believe, students like coming to a campus. There will, I believe, distance ed has its role. And students like a blending of distance ed and face-to-face. And I believe education is a social activity. The COVID-19 will affect the planning as far as timing. But in the end, your buildings need to be maintained. They need to be replaced. And I do believe career communities are going to be here for some time.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think it's very hopeful that people have seen, you know, we did really suddenly on the, in the, on the turn of a dime, we moved everything online. And we did it in instruction, we did it in Student Services. We did a lot of stuff. But the fact is, the majority of our students did not come to PCC to be online. They don't want to be online, and they're not happy. And that's why we are, we have a mix of classes. If it were a normal semester, we have online options for folks. We have face-to-face options for folks, and it's because people learn in different ways. So there may be some fluctuations that come in the next couple of years that there's no way we could have forecasted. But the overall forecast was done according to generally accepted demographic research. And I don't think COVID-19 is going to dramatically change it to the point where how we've structured the FMP would significantly change.
John Martin, please.
Yeah, I had a similar question to Sandra on that. I've had it several times throughout the process, even almost pre-COVID. And came to, you know, because I was concerned about the trending demographics and a declining population in our K-12 districts. And as we heard at the beginning of this presentation, it's based on a state maximum, I think, of 1.5% growth. And as I considered those things, I thought we are in a better position planning closer to what we think the maximum could be, knowing that future decisions, we can always pare down. It's much easier to pare down in the future and say, you know, maybe we don't need to do this, maybe we don't need to do that, than it is to get seven, eight years in and all of a sudden say, wow, we just really missed it. We needed this, and we, there's no way to fit it in now. So it kind of in respect to that same idea, I think we're wise to err slightly on the side of a greater capacity, rather to, rather than err on the side of a lesser capacity because we do have more flexibility to adjust off a greater capacity plan than a lesser capacity plan in the future.
Yeah, point well taken, John. And I would also add, for some context, the last time we were presented with a, I wouldn't call it an FMP, but I would call it a list of buildings that could have led to a bond issuance in 2016. At that time, the, that list of buildings would have resulted in a 50% increase.
Yeah.
FAR, floor area ratio. And this, Dr. Bush indicated, leads to about a 10% increase. So that is, we're more replacing buildings whose useful lives have reached close to the end than making a significant addition. Dr. Bush, it might be good to show a graphically, you know, how 1.5% per year enrollment increase over time. And these buildings aren't going to be on campus tomorrow to show that as the student population enrollment potentially increases, you know, what buildup that is over, you know, 10 years. In 10 years, that's a 15% increase enrollment if we did it.
I do have a little, a question that's a little bit of a follow-up on that. So I know when I was on the FMP Committee, we had brought this up, as John said, and we talked about some fluidity in, in access, I guess, for our students. And I guess in the past, Tony has talked about campus light. And we brought that up, I think, when HGA was there. So is there, is there going to be anything in the FMP that would indicate that we would be planning for maybe off-site satellite meeting spots for the students? You know, I think the prediction is that there will be a number of students who will now really want to embrace sort of this virtual learning access. So would, would the FMP include any of that?
The FMP within our campuses includes areas for students to meet, to socialize, to receive services spread out through the campus. It also includes spaces, affinity spaces for different affinity groups, say like the veterans, to have a place to meet. And the, one of the things that came from working with our students, both in surveys, interviews, and being on the committee, they're looking for areas where they can study together and sit at a table and do schoolwork together, also to discuss ideas and have a collegial atmosphere. So that's being incorporated into all the campuses' designs. But as far as a completely remote conference room, we have not addressed that in this plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this is the current state of our campus. And those are the letters on the buildings, how it's laid out. And this is what. this is what we're proposing the campus be when we're completely finished. So you can see the areas that are are kind of orange rust, they're the new construction. And then the blue are the renovated buildings, major renovations.
Can you go back to the way, yes, great, thank you. Thank you.
So this is the impact that campus layout will have on our career communities. You can see where the STEM will be all in the same area. You'll see areas for like the business industry. You'll see where the arts is. And then that's why I'm saying the new academic building is closer to the arts building, it kind of overflows into it. And then we have a red area, which is just kind of general studies or overlap area of the career communities. This is a look at what happens with outdoor spaces. We have out in front of the C building, the Mirpools and how it flows, it's kind of our signature area of the campus. And then we have our main quad between student services and the R building, which is the quad. And of course, we do have a somewhat of a quad area between Lassiter's Pass and the arts building, but it would be enhanced to a larger quad area. And of course, we have the Sculpture Garden area. So those would be defined outdoor spaces. And although we have areas where it's green, it's really not anticipated to be lawn. It is the front of Colorado will probably have grass, a lawn feature, because that's kind of iconic. But in the the green space areas could be gardens, it could be areas where students can have tables, be able to sit. But just outdoor areas where students can congregate and socialize and study. And then the hard spaces, you can see, there's really only two hard spaces. And I can't really get my mouse to work on this thing, but here's a hard space. And then right over here is another hard space. So those would be hard kind of quads and we could still put tables and umbrellas, but be able to move them out of the way for when there was like transfer day and different events happening.
Dr. Bush, quick, Dr. Bush, quick question. I know one of the ideas here with the the line green is to have on all four corners of the main campus a a green space or or something. Do you envision monument signage on all four corners in the same way that we have something at the corner of Hill and Colorado presently?
Not as large, but we do need a monument in landscaping. One of the things we've noticed, especially on Del Mar, our campus bleeds into the neighborhood. And then if you're a neighbor, it doesn't really, when you look across, you have the back of the stadium or parking garage. There's not something attractive defining the campus. So that one of our goals was to have a greater campus identity on Colorado. And we do that through green space and monuments in all four corners, but probably not the electronic signage in all four corners. But something that says you've arrived at Pasadena City College.
Yeah, more more passive monument signage versus the active digital sign that you have at Hill and Colorado.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Silver.
Hi, the quad is very hot. The sun really reflects off of the concrete. Is there anything besides just little umbrellas you could do to make more substantial shade?
Trees. I like trees and we have a few that.
Break the concrete to plant trees there or?
If we need to. But in, that's the traditional one, has some trees already. And then the new quad, we we could build them in. But trees help. Then we have umbrellas, depending on the type of event, you put up shade structures. We, 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 I think we own more pop-ups than anyone else.
And I think, and I know trustee Silver, that looking at shade will be definitely part of the conversation. You don't really see it there because this is more about the building than it is about the landscaping. But that is one of the most interesting things about Pasadena City College since I've been there, because I came from a campus. LA Valley College, we had 1,800 trees and so we had a lot of natural shade. We also had a lot more wind than, and that makes a big difference. The air is very still in our microclimate, so shade will be very important. It's just not there in the landscaping.
Yeah, we we have a number of trees that are unique and we're, we're beginning to catalog them. And then we'll continue planting trees. But I, in the long run, that's the best thing, I think, for the shade.
Thank you.
So we talked a little about wavefinding and there's a nice summary of the type of signage we have, which is really all over the place. We have some things that have been up for over 20 years and they're using weird fonts and different things. Alex Bucklehead and marketing have kind of come up with our signature graphics, our more iconic graphics. And then we worked hard to identify types of signage, types of schemes, so we could have a unique branding to us and make sure we share that. Another thing that came up during our our wavefinding committee is having more international symbols. You'll see them at the bottom and be able to put those on buildings and on directional signage. So people have to read the whole sign, but they'll be able to see that this is a bus stop or these are restrooms or, you know, the no smoking, the cafeteria. So we're going to be incorporating a lot of those symbols in our signage. We looked at parking and transportation. Parking currently, this is the Colorado campus. And we have our lots 10 and 11, actually nine, 10, 11, but 10 and 11 are very unique because Caltech owns those, they own the land and we have a 40-year lease. But at some point, Caltech's going to want to do something with that land and then we'll have a conversation with about mitigating our parking, which they are open to when they bought bought the land. They were upfront, they will help us mitigate our parking when it comes time to use it. You, you see lot number six, lot number six, we're going to lose that lot to the new STEM building. And we'll also lose the tennis courts where we'll put in new parking. So net will pretty much be the same. We're recommending expanding the parking garage four to bring it into lot three and have a smaller lot three and have a garage over part of lot three.
What is the, for for parking? What is the the challenges with our students with parking? Are they finding that there are enough parking spaces or is that hard to come by?
The biggest challenge is a parking permit's a hunting license. So they get the parking permit and then they got to go find a space. So we, we did surveys and we only hit 85% of our capacity. But how do we communicate where those open spaces are? So we're looking at getting counters in the garages and the the parking, the student parking lots, which counts the number of cars that go in, the number of cars that go out, and they know the net available spaces. And then having that with an app, so students can check before they arrive at campus. Oh, parking garage number five is full, I got to go to garage four.
And trustee Sartisian, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, like, that parking counter thing would be huge for students, just kind of a trustee Chen Lau was saying. I think parking is a huge, also just a huge aspect of, I mean, I know in a lot of community colleges, it's not just a Pasadena problem. It's like a thing for students of like, how early do I need to get there to get parking? So I think personally with my own ad hoc committee, we've talked, student-run ad hoc committee, we've talked about this and that's, they're just number one concern because it's like, how early do I need to get up now to go to class? How, you know, something they also brought up was during this time, especially when there's construction going on. I think there is a student consensus there, they want these new buildings and they want all this, this great stuff planned over the next 10 years. But during like the biggest halls, if there is, you know, if if a whole parking lot is down, if professors could be more like understanding, that's something they were saying of being late to class if they can't make it just because of the lack of parking or they have to get up earlier. And I know that's not going to be like all students, but that was just there, kind of about this. But I think the counter and on the app, when I've tried the app recently and it's great, I think that is like revolutionary.
Yeah, and we don't have to wait for major construction to start implementing some of those things. If we put the counters on just the two garages, that would be a big improvement.
I have a question, a comment.
Yes.
This is trustee Brown. So the parking has always been a little confusing to me because do we, maybe should we know what percentage of our students are driving to campus? Because we have all of this metro pass and all, and we're still having problems with parking. So how is this actually working? It seems to me like it's not working if we, the students, according to Alex, are having problems finding parking and they're commuting on bus. So is there where we could find out what percentage of our students are actually using the metro and how many people are driving? I think that would be good for the future.
I can, we can find the number of students that we've helped or sold a metro pass to. We can look at the number of parking passes, either long-term or daily passes we sell. We do encourage other types of transportation other than a car and parking. But the main issue that we've heard from the students in our survey tells us that we have enough parking spaces, it's just finding that space. And if a student has to spend a half hour driving through lots to look to find the parking space, it's very frustrating. So.
Okay, so what you suppose is good then if they have enough patience? So that's good, okay.
So and then.
Trustee Martin had a question, sorry to interrupt, Mike.
No problem. Yes, sir.
Actually, it's PCC fun fact. So back before we built the structures and there was a real parking dilemma or before we built all the structures, we used to limit the number of student parking permits so that if you had a parking permit, you were relatively assured to easily find a parking spot. And that change was led by a student trustee, and I give this fun fact especially for Erica, named Scott Svankin. We developed the Svankin Plan where we wouldn't limit the number of sale of parking permits so that basically students could self-select if they wanted a headhunting license for a parking spot or not. So it was this Svankin Plan where we changed it over to the more robust system, shall I say, that we use now. So that's just, just a little fun fact for Erica, so.
That is classic.
Okay.
He's he's going to be, trustee Svankin will be following you forever. I do have a question on this, so I had brought this up before. So back several years ago, we were, I was told we had a parking plan, I, a parking traffic study. And this was because we were fighting for better pricing for the MTA passes. And we had heard that when we had so many of our students using MTA passes, we had reduced the need for parking, which is one of the reasons I'm, I'd rather see our students put their, you know, I'd rather see us be able to fund public transportation for them rather than using our space for these parking structures. But but I thought when we talked about it with HGA, they were, we were going to, we were both going to look for the previous traffic study, which I guess was never found, and then we're going to do some kind of a traffic study.
Well, we, we weren't going to hire HGA to do a traffic study. We hired them to do a parking study and they brought in the traffic engineer to do the parking. But we haven't looked at the traffic on the on the Colorado or Del Mar, count the cars. And we are still looking for that traffic study, but it's not in my office and Richard hasn't been able to find it. We do have a warehouse full of boxes and as we're scanning those boxes into electronic records, we're looking for that as we go through it. But that's a slow process.
Yeah, I can imagine.
When we, we, I would like to talk about the public transportation because we do support it and we advocate for it. And we advocate for bicycles also, but we run shuttles to the metro stop. We also are working with the buses with Metro to have a, they have a new line that they're looking at. And we're working with them to have it terminate at the college. And we're going to probably, and it's still up for discussion, but around parking lot one, have a cutout where they can charge their bus, it's an electric bus. And so at the end here, students will be able to get off and go to class, they'll charge the bus and then they'll go up to, I think it's Union they're thinking about, and then they would go to on, back around the loop. So we're working with groups to get busing out by the Mirpool. We, right about in front of the the D building, there's a cutout for busing right now where they drop off at campus, coming down Colorado. So we continue to work with the public transportation and we also run our shuttles to to the metro stops. And we run shuttles from Rosemead to the main campus or, excuse me, the Colorado campus. So that helps with students not having to drive between campuses.
Yeah, I was glad to see that, that service put in. Yeah, I think whatever, I think whatever we can do to reduce the need for for the parking and using up our land for parking, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, and and we're pushing for bicycles, we're seeing a little uptick on bicycles coming in as an alternative. And as you know, the buses, you can put bikes on also, so you could take the bus partway and bicycle the rest of the way.
Yeah, you know, one of the companies in Pasadena that makes those Urby electric scooters are, it's a Pasadena company and they actually were hired by USC to run their transit center for multimodal transportation, not just Urby's. But you know, you could put our PCC logo on one of those, so it'd be kind of cool to do that.
Yeah.
Well, there certainly is probably an increase in Uber or Lyft, you know, as well around campus. Would that be part of the the parking study or the the transportation study?
No, I don't believe so. I believe the transportation study was done before ride sharing was a big, big thing.
Okay.
We do have limited ride sharing and it seems to be more in the evening. And they drop off at the main entrance off a hill. We have that turnaround right here. They'll pull in, drop off and take off and you'll see people waiting to be picked up there.
Uh, trustee Martin, you have your hand up.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. So. Before we had any parking structures. Parking was extremely important to me. It was one of the mantras upon which one, some of my early candidacies ran. Especially for my district without a PCC Rosemead, without good bus service back then. Uh, and it's very important. As we stated in the beginning. Of our five or six major. Desires or accomplishments, we're trying to get in the master plan. The one objective we didn't probably do as well on was parking. And in some ways, I'm comfortable where we are for the moment. With parking, not that, because number one. As just described by so many other trustees, there are other alternatives to driving a car these days. Number two, as we discussed in the potential COVID fallout. We may see the desire or the necessity of more online or hybrid classes requiring less parking. And then number three, I appreciate the way from earlier presentations. We have some flexibility for future decisions in parking. And in particular, I remember lot three. Where there's some plan here in this plan, and Mike can correct me. To maybe make part of lot three multi-level to afford more parking. But not all of lot three to be more multi-level, but we could at a later time as a. Slight variance of this plan, if we find we are parking deprived. Either expand the amount of lot three that goes into multi-tier. Or we may even consider, you know, acquiring additional real estate similar to ten or eleven. Where at some point we could even do more multi-parking. So we're taking a lot of time in this presentation on parking and parking is very important because if we can't get our students to campus, what good is it? But I do appreciate the, the way I view this plan, giving us some flexibility in the future. As we see the fallout of some of the trends that have occurred more recently with. With different forms of transportation. To adjust at that time to make sure we can accommodate our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the final thought on parking is we did not go to subterranean parking because of the cost. But at some point in the future. That is an option a future board could consider. There is no subterranean parking in this plan. So sustainability. It used to be that we went with what we would call LEED. And we'd have a LEED certified building. And our arts building is LEED certified. And that would say how, what sorts of sustainable. Building materials, how, how does the building operate? What's the impact on the carbon footprint? Higher ed is moving more towards STARS, which looks at both the academic. It looks at campus engagement. It looks at how we do operation. Planning and administration and innovation and leadership. It still looks at. What are we doing with the building? But it talks more about how we use the building. Are we including sustainability in our academics? Are we engaging the campus community in sustainable efforts? And then what are we doing in planning and administration, like in our purchasing specs? Do we have sustainable requirements when we bid things out? And then looking at various innovations. We did a preliminary assessment of STARS. And we're actually hitting something in all the areas and we would. If we filed to be part of STARS. The architect Phil will come in at a bronze level now. And then as we look at our new construction, we could then probably enhance that. And there is a lot of interest, both with our students and our faculty. And in fact, they've. Re-initiated the sustainability committee. And looking at ways we can improve our operation and our engagement on campus. Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about demolition. This is an area that I received some constructive criticism on when I had the town hall. Because I kind of flew through the demolition. And why are we demolishing certain areas of the campus? It isn't simply to rearrange buildings, although urban planning is very intriguing and what we could do with the. The public spaces is engaging, but why would we say we don't need this student service building? And why did we get rid of the Seraphim Building? And what's wrong with the W building and the V building? Well, we'll look at generally what we would call the facility cost index. And that's something the chancellor's office tracks. And when we give, get above fifty percent. And what that would be the cost to repair the building versus the cost of the building. So when we're getting above fifty percent. Then people start discussing replacing the building. Then when we look at something and we'll use the V building for an example. The V building is not ADA compliant. It has a, and, and everything was up to code in nineteen sixty-eight when that building opened. But that was pre-DSA. Pre-American Disability Act. It. Has no elevators in it. It has a weird ramp that you have to go into either the R or the C building and go down a ramp that frankly is too steep. To be compliant.
It's so not compliant.
And the other issues we have in that building is there is no female restrooms. It was the shop building. And there is only male restrooms in it. Their fire safety is, was built to code at the time. It's not to current code. So there's, besides it having a FCI facility cost index of fifty-eight percent. We would then have all these additional things we'd have to do to bring the building up to code. The W building.
Did you say the D? Did you say D as in dog?
No, V.
D as in Victor.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, 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 not iconic buildings.
Yeah, no, no. The three iconic buildings are there and then we have two real historic buildings that we're not.
The only thing he's saying is that the V Victor building is a dog.
It is.
Exactly. It's a dog.
It is only. It, it, it's, it, we, it's semi-functional now, but it is not a proper educational environment. W building's worse.
Mike, if I could make a suggestion here, just, this is just a presentation suggestion. If on the demolition, if on this slide, you could only put the buildings that are being demolished.
Okay.
And label them. And I understand like, oh, say in the northeast corner, you're demolishing some parking lot and making some. Green space, but to me, it would be more informative just to see the buildings that were demolishing and to put the, the letter on them. To help us understand the buildings being demolished.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
So we have the W building, which was the women's gym. In that building, it's also not ADA compliant. The plumbing is almost failed in there. And to the point that two-inch supply lines going into the building have burst. And we're going through and we'll replace this twenty-foot section and then later. A year or two later, we're having another section burst. There was a fire in the building that was never repaired. So that's another issue that needs to be cleaned up. And then immediately when you hear, oh, there was a fire, you notice there's no fire sprinklers because in the sixties, we didn't put them in the buildings. And although there is a fire alarm system in there. It doesn't have ADA enunciators. It doesn't have the strobes. It doesn't have a sprinkler system. So to repair that building and it has a fifty-four percent. FCI would be cost prohibitive.
There's also no elevator in that building. So in order to get to the second floor, if you are not. If you are in a wheelchair or differently able, you have to go into the, the Robbins building, the R building. And take a ramp over.
Okay, so those are the three buildings that we'd be looking at. Demolishing and replacing. We're also looking at the pool because.
Mike, before, pardon the interruption, before we go to the pool. I think it would be helpful for us. If you made a chart with a few rows and a few columns. Describing on the chart what you just described to us verbally, and that is. The name of the building. The facilities index number that it's at. A, a list of the few reasons why that building is, is obsolete. And if you have it, what it would cost that instead of demolishing it, we were to. You know, the expense it would take to fix all those projects and, and bring it current and to. Help demonstrate the impracticality. And I'm asking that because I got the same kind of feedback from my constituents that, that you just mentioned, the single. The, the two biggest questions or issues or critique for, in the town, in the. The, the public forum that we just held. Was, you know, why are we tearing down these buildings? So I think if you can demonstrate that on a chart, that will help to explain why.
Can I just interject here and say that Mike's feedback was the feedback you gave me? So it wasn't separate feedback, number one. And number two, the charts that you're talking about, I just want to understand where exactly do you want those charts to appear? Once they're made.
Well, you guys can figure that out, but it seems like it would be, you know, in this, in this section of the presentation.
Okay, so as part of the permanent record of the presentation upon which the board considered the FMP.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's what it would be. Thanks.
We can do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I was moving into the pool, which isn't a huge expense to move the pool. But the main issue with the pool is it needs to be drained and completely replastered. It, all the pool equipment needs to be replaced, including the heater. It, when it was first built, it had what's called a cogeneration unit. So when you ran the heater, it produced electricity and that has not been working for five or six years. So when we're looking at the layout of the campus and we're Science Villages. The idea if we could put the pool there and then it would be available for. Recreation activities currently during the summer. When the youngsters come on campus for their swim lessons, they have to go through the complete campus. And sometimes they're not accompanied by their parents. So the idea if we had a, a entrance. Off of Bonnie. Then the YMCA or the city or whoever's running the swim lessons could have a entrance that's off of the campus. So, and then the rest of it's pretty much parking or grounds work that we're talking about ripping up to. Put something else there. Okay. So this is the new construction that we're looking at. And then the blue is the modernized buildings. And then the yellow is the parking and we talked about extending lot four out into lot three on a multi-level. And the other thing we would be able to address is our neighbors. Are continually frustrated by people exiting lot four. And wanting to take a left onto Del Mar instead of a right only. And traffic congestion problems. So we could reconfigure the exit to have it go out on hill. So not to impact the residents across the way. Okay, so we can't shut the campus down to do all this construction. So we have to do it in phases in order to keep the campus open. So the very first thing we're, we're going to move forward with is the Seraphim Building. And then the first phase. We're, we're suggesting should be the new STEM building. As well as a new food service building. In the circular area there, as well as expanding lot number four. Then the second phase would be a new student services building. And the swimming pool. And you notice we're kind of working across the campus, so we don't have projects stacking up on one another. Then number three will be in the center of campus would be the new academic building. Four would be modernized, the R building. Five, which six will be at the, probably around the same time, would be modernizing the C building. So tho- those are the. Phases. Each phase will take. About two to three years, planning till open. But we can overlap phases. So while we're constructing phase one, we could be doing the design work for phase two. And then roll through the projects in that manner.
So Mike, when you're talking about modernizing R and C. That means renovating R and C, right? Are you talking about? We're not, but what, what is the level of renovation? Are you thinking about completely regutting? The both buildings or you, or you know. You know, on a scale, i- i- is there, is this, you know. A lot of work or, or cosmetic?
No, D and E would be cosmetic. No, this is gutting the building, putting in new mechanical systems. They both need new HVAC, new plumbing, updated electrical.
Plus I need my Taj Mahal office.
Yes, yeah, we're working on that.
I know.
And then the C building. Over the years, we have. Captured classroom space and converted it to offices or. The. Administrative services like printing, things like that, that you find in the basement. And it would be nice to restore it to classrooms. It, we could get a lot of more classroom space out of that building.
Especially that backside, that's kind of weird.
Well, yeah.
Unused space.
There's, there's a lot, the alleyway.
Yeah, the alleyway. Like what is that?
I, I have my comments, but it goes back to the nineteen seventies. So. But that, there used to be a street here, you know, and actually the street was, would come down like this. And then we'd be able to go in and they, they did things in the alleyway back there. And but that's the whole area of the campus that really needs to be cleaned up and refreshed is the backside of that building. And then if we didn't have the V building here and you could go across to the arts building. It, it would all flow a lot nicer.
I'm excited to hear that Erica is going to get new offices in phase five. Which will probably be about twenty. Which will probably be about twenty thirty. So that means we're going to get to keep her for a while. So that's just, I love that plan, Erica. I'm right with you on that.
Oh, that's funny. That's very nice, John. Thank you.
That's why we put it in phase five. So any questions? So.
So going back to the the Seraphim Building. That was approved. It was. The total cost of the building is not approved, right? I mean, we still need to. There's still a budget gap of what the building costs and what the state gave us.
Correct. And that is going to be the last thing we discuss today. And I'll have a slide that actually has the numbers on it.
Yeah, so hold that thought. We'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So Foothill Campus. Foothill Campus. The main classroom building, the community center needs to be remodeled. Fairly extensive, but not as much as the C and R buildings. And then we're recommending a new twenty-four thousand square foot building. And it would be located in lot B where the relocatables currently are. But because we put that building in and keep in mind, one of the. More aggressive growth is in non-credit. So that's why we're recommending this building, although. Non-credit could also be offered on the Colorado campus. But we would.
Just to confirm that area there where you're doing that addition. We'll call it lot B. That is on land that we own as opposed to land that we lease across the street, so to speak.
Correct. That's land we own, but it will necessitate that we continue. Our love hate relationship with Edison and leasing those lots under the power lines. The Rosemead Campus recommendations. See, I have people in the way of my recommendation. Okay, we're looking at. The existing building needs to be refreshed. And then we need to add an additional twenty thousand square feet. If we went two story, it would be a forty thousand square foot building. Which will make that campus quite large compared to what it is now, triple the space of the campus.
Are you speaking about this being non-credit as well?
There is, we could offer some there, but we. Okay, so the big issue here is we would be taking parking up. And we will be short parking in the end.
And we don't own the building.
Or the land.
Or the land.
Yeah, so. And that's something the facility committee discussed and. We had direction to send a letter of inquiry to Almonte School District to see. If they'd be interested in selling it, but then COVID nineteen hit, so we haven't sent those letters off. We had same direction for. Pasadena Northwest.
Trustee Sarkisian, you have your hand up, sir.
I just wanted to double check something because there's something one of my committee members brought up. Parking will not be affected at Rosemead, right, in terms of less parking?
There would be less parking if we put a building in the middle of the spaces. So right now, this where it says new building is all parking.
It's staff parking though, which means staff would take student parking.
Yeah.
But it seems to me that there's a lot of parking around the neighborhood and I haven't seen any restricted parking.
Not yet.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm sure if the neighbors get upset, they might.
So Mike, when we, if we were to do an expansion like this and lose parking. When we do buildings, our jurisdictional agency is DSA, but does the city have any say so and parking? Ratio requirements such that they could tell us, no, you can't do that because now your ratio of parking. To ratio of building square footage, instructional square footage. Is now too low and we don't want the cars spilling out into the neighborhood. Does the city have of Rosemead have any jurisdiction over this?
Yes.
Thank you, Tony.
You can only have, you have to have so many parking. It depends on the city codes. But yes, there's great restrictions on that. Can I ask a question to you, Mike? Because I was at your other presentation. You mentioned that if, that we probably, tell me if I'm wrong, we probably wouldn't go forward with renovating this campus if we didn't own it. And that we might be better off looking at another site, correct?
Sort of. What I think in this, this isn't my private club and I'm not an elected trustee. This is a decision the trustees would need to make. My recommendation is either you have a very long lease. Or you own it. Because without that, you will not get the return on your investment. And currently we're on five year leases with them. So if you needed to put a million dollars into. Into the building and you could, they could say goodbye in five years, you wouldn't get your thirty year investment out of it. On the other hand, if you had a forty year lease or ninety-nine year lease, sometimes. Municipalities and districts are interested in selling the building and giving you a long land lease. Because they don't want to part with the land. That's an option, but currently the current lease structure would not warrant a large cash investment.
And Tony, I concur with Mike's. You know, guidance, thought process on that. Either, you know, if we're going to make significant capital improvements. Anywhere in our campuses. Either we own the land, which would probably be our best preference. But also a long term lease of sufficiently long length would be. Justification to put significant capital expenditures on that property.
I agree with you. I wouldn't approve anything if we didn't have a lease or another site.
So I agree too, but but where does this, where do these decisions for Rosemead and Muir fall within the. The same, the spacing of the rest of the facilities construction?
Towards the end. So probably five years into it, but they could be moved up. The, their phasing could be done at any time. You could just, you could have a need, I think, one of your greatest needs is PCC Northwest. The building, it needs a lot of TLC.
Foothill would have to, Foothill would have to wait until the Seraphim Building is built. That's the only phasing issue.
Because part of it is because are we anticipating growth? In Rosemead or Foothill at the same, we're probably not anticipating the same rate of growth as. Of these two campuses as we are with the Northwest or. What is the anticipated rate of growth for these campuses?
We didn't run the growth figures separately. We ran them by programs and we can push programs in or out.
Brown. Thank you. I didn't need to bust in, but you guys didn't see me. But going back to. The discussion on. Oh, where is it? Muir and Rosemead. So. There's a lot of energy and time has been spent and as far as. Rosemead is concerned, we have seen the tremendous increase in our students. It's just amazing. So as far as I'm concerned, and I agree one hundred percent. That we should not invest a lot of money that we cannot recoup with a short lease. So if we're talking about a twenty years lease, I continue to say that it is doable. And unfortunately, the coronavirus. Shocked, but this may just not be a bad idea either. So you know, when people are in dire need, you never know what happens. So no, I think we need to try as much as possible to lock in those. Leases. I would not, I would not be happy. Seeing of looking for another area in Rosemead or. For that matter, in Northwest Pasadena. So these are things that I agree with you, Dr. Bush. We should not invest. In accepting the amount of money and something that we don't own. But again, I think. Both of those standards are doable. I think they will come through. But that's my take.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Brown. Any other?
I did, Erica.
Thank you. I can't see you. I have to make sure I know what you're thinking. Thank you.
Trustee Martin, you're next, sir.
Yeah, just, I view, I view what I'm seeing here for Northwest and Rosemead. More or less as a placeholder for things to come. There's no conceivable way and I will stand corrected by Mike and Erica, but the last report I remember hearing specifically on Rosemead. There'd be no way for Rosemead to grow as it's pretty much maxed. Every classroom, every day, all the time, it's maxed. So you know, that's a very positive indication for the success of the program and the need. And for greater potential. But obviously, this twenty thousand square feet is a placeholder to see what. What, what are some options there? What fits the needs of some of the other public institutions? How can we do that? So I view this as a basic placeholder. Obviously, we'll be smart going forward in whatever we do, not putting a large sum of money into something of a very short magnitude.
And I would just follow up and agree with John and say, you know, given the huge geographic spread. Of our district, I think these, these. Satellite campuses are extremely important for accessibility for the outer reaches of our district.
Want to talk a little bit about PCC Northwest. Pete, the building. Needs a lot of work. I, my counterpart Leslie at the district, we've had conversations. The Unified District is having issues with enrollment at John Muir. And they are open to either a longer lease, they are look, they have a committee that hasn't been meeting. Because of the COVID nineteen about the disposition of properties. And she's encouraged us to get in a line. Because our use of the property is something that would not be counter. To their district mission. Ie a charter school or a private school buying something that would help drain. We. We have a collegial with our dual enrollment there. Another interesting thing about John Muir. John Muir was originally built as a college. By the Pasadena School District when it was K fourteen. And it was the second college in the area that did Terminus degrees. So the idea is they would go to two year, thirteen and fourteen at, it'd actually be. Eleven, the junior senior year and two more years and they graduate and they would go to work. So that was originally the second college campus. And I believed it was roughly in the sixties when it closed and became just a high school. So it'd be nice to get. A more long term presence there again as a college. And not have it be torn up and turn into. A yard for the city to park things in, so. I'm advocating for John Muir. I like it. But it needs a lot of work, but I think it'd be great for the community up there. Okay, so we want to talk about funding the plan. And we're going to at a future time, talk more about bonds and types of bonds. But sometimes we get wrapped up in our plant, our facilities plan and we jump right into, oh, my gosh, the economy, what's going on? But I want to try to separate them. The current cost estimates for this plan is seven hundred eight million. That's a lot of money. And it doesn't include things like buying those sites. On a Prop thirty-nine bond, which I would recommend, we can go in through the difference between a Prop thirty-nine and a Prop. Proposition forty-six bonds later. But a Prop thirty-nine bond, which is a simple majority, must be held on a regularly scheduled local election. You cannot have a special election. So given what's happening with the economy, we want to look at what opportunities would we have moving forward? To put a bond on the ballot. We have this November of twenty twenty. The next opportunity would be March twenty twenty-two. Then November twenty twenty-two, then March twenty twenty-four and then November twenty twenty-four. So those are different opportunities to place a bond. On the ballot. So just a second, I was attacked by my dog. Ryder, I'm in a board meeting, could you?
Ryder's his son, not the dog.
Sorry. So when we're looking at. What's going on with the economy? I gotta be honest, I don't know if now's the proper time to put a bond on the ballot. We're going to do surveying, we're going to find out. But I believe with the amount of economic pain out there, it may not be as popular. But that doesn't mean our plan is flawed. We have a good plan. We may just be looking to a future date to fund it. So. In less than two years, we would be able to put it on a March ballot. It, if the economy is turning, this would be an incredible economic stimulus for our community, but it has to be right. And well, we committed to. Develop a plan based off our educational needs to cost out that plan. And then to do survey data, so the board would know what the community is thinking. We're still moving forward with the survey data, but I want to temper our expectations. I think a lot of us read what's going on in the economy. This may not be the right time. And with that, I'll give it to the board if you want to.
I have a question regarding the survey. What is, I mean. What would it cost to have a survey and why should we pay for one in these times when we already know what the answer is going to be?
So Alex, do you want to talk a little bit about this? And I want to just point out that the foundation is paying for this. We are not paying for this.
Yeah, thank you, Erica. Since. Late last year, we started conversations with a survey firm through the foundation to, you know, get some ideas of a study. You know, to get the sense of what the community would think about a bond support. And as you know, the COVID thing came along and we've been postponing and postponing the collection of that data since. We basically have been waiting for a time when. Folks will be able to consider the concept of supporting the college in this way and can respond to questions about, you know, their needs and the college's needs and priorities. When things are not too clouded by the day to day news about what's been going on with coronavirus. As you can imagine, that's been a very complicated needle thread because the news just keeps on coming. So we've had a survey in development and in the wings for quite some. Um, so we've had a survey in development and in the wings for quite some time, and we've been waiting for the right time to do that. Um, we are, had thought that mid-May or May would be the right time to be in the field to collect that information, but, um, we're still working with our, um, advisors to see when it would be best to get out there and get that information collected.
Yeah.
And I need to correct the record here that actually we are paying for the survey. It's the whole bond campaign and consultant that we don't pay for. Thank you.
And, and I think, just to clarify very quickly, that we, we have some assumptions about what we might know about this, but, you know, those who were on the board four years ago now um, will remember that we did see substantial support from the community um, for the concept of the, of a bond, and particularly for the college. So I think, uh, to assume that that evaporated in the wake of, of what's going on with coronavirus, I think, uh, we don't quite know that. So we're curious to know what, what the answer would be, and it's, it's, uh, it's an investment we're ready to make in the context of this overall project. Mike, do you want to take up more of that?
Yes.
Well, I would like to get an idea of how much it's gonna cost, that's what I want to know.
Well, I, I'd be happy. I'd be happy to address that. It is, it's roughly $20,000 for the survey, and we already hired the company, we already paid them to develop it, and. So, it's a matter of executing it and getting the product now. We're under contract currently.
Okay, well, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
Well, we started, you know, six months ago, pre-COVID, we didn't know.
And neither our political consultant for feasibility nor the survey person's been billing us while we've been idle. Uh, they, they did realize with COVID-19, they had a pause. So they've been upfront that way and not charging us while we've been pausing. But we are under contract to complete the survey.
Okay, and, and, uh, my, my question is, um, if the survey questions were developed pre-COVID, do we need to, uh, rethink and, and possibly, um, um, take another look and maybe change the questions we're asking? Or, or maybe they're still the same questions?
Yeah, well, some will be the same. We're, we're interested to know what the economic stimulus part, how does that ring with the voters? When we talk about this being an economic stimulus, we could also survey when's the best time? We could look at the timing issue.
And we have been actively keeping the survey up to date throughout this period of pause, so.
And, and our consultants are very, um, proactive in reaching out to us and saying, this is the climate now, we need to check this. So we, we do have the basis, but I think we're going to be their first COVID-19 survey. They're, they're pretty active on it.
And I'm sorry, how much is it? How much is it?
The survey part's about $20,000.
Oh, okay, so that's nothing.
What about the entire, um, cost of the survey plus the consultants plus the?
Well.
The feasibility?
It, it, it's a, it's a unique relationship.
I understand.
Okay, the district pays for anything before the board makes a decision to put something on a ballot.
Right.
Once the board makes a decision to put it on the ballot, the foundation picks it up.
Right.
But the whole package could be anywhere between a 80 to about 150, depending on what type of campaign they're gonna run.
Right.
We, I believe, and I'll, I'll have to confirm the numbers, but I believe we're into the consultant for about 40 and the survey for about 20.
That's about right.
And who ended up being our, our consultant?
The survey company is called True North Research. They're based in, uh, I want to say San Diego County. Um, and the consultant is TBWH, they're, they're in the Bay Area.
Okay.
And TBWH is a lot of people with big names, I can't ever remember.
Yeah.
So I don't have any problem going, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So, um, so we're going to go forward with engage, well, we have engaged this consultant, and we're gonna go through the polling. And most likely, when we do the polling, it's gonna tell us that it's not the right time. So in two years from now or three years, when we see this, or we anticipate that this is gonna be a good time, do we most likely have to reengage and repay another consultant to do the polling again?
I, I would recommend it.
Okay.
Because the, the polling will let you know the true feasibility before you invest hundred or more thousand of the foundation money to run a campaign. Um, a campaign is not cheap for a, a general bond. So I, I'd recommend, and also, you know, there's one philosophy, you could put it on the ballot and see what happens. There's also the philosophy, I, I want to win if it goes on the ballot. So you, you want to know what the likelihood of success is before you vote to put something on the ballot.
So it's fait accompli that we're gonna go forward with the survey, right?
Right.
I mean, so it's already, yeah, so I don't have any problem doing that. I do worry that trying to go out in November 2020 on, uh, for a bond is maybe pretty risky. It would be interesting to see what they come back with on the best date. Um, but having seen so many of our school bonds fail in the last election, which was surprising, it's the first time we've seen that many fail. It seems quite unlikely that in November, we would see a different turn of events. Um, and while I hate to delay this, it's, you know, we want to be successful in getting this through, and we want our communities to feel comfortable, um, moving this through. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be good to go ahead and do the survey. But I remember sitting through, um, San Marino's, uh, survey and their consultant, and they said best time, you know, and that's without a doubt, this couldn't fail. And yet it still failed, and it was just, you know, bad timing. Bad timing and a number of other things, but mostly bad timing.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would, uh, thank you for sharing that, Linda. I would suggest that the Super Tuesday elections hadn't really been hit by COVID-19 impact yet, and there was something else at play there. Uh, because we weren't staying at home and we hadn't shut down businesses and we weren't yet seeing economic impact. It was something being talked about as being in China, and it had kind of sort of gotten over here, but I don't think it had really entered people's psyche yet by March 3rd that, that, um, the.
No, it hadn't, it hadn't, it was voter fatigue.
On business, and my point is.
Yeah, it was bond fatigue, it was bond fatigue. People were tired, they'd been hit with so many bonds, and there was bond fatigue.
And Prop 13.
Right, Prop 13, right, which was, yeah, heavily campaigned against by Jarvis people who, who paralleled it to the Prop 13. So it was an unfortunate use of a proposition number. And it was, but a lot of it was bond fatigue from the, the voters and, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it was bond fatigue before we even had COVID-19 impact. And, um, uh, somebody helped me out with the numbers here, but I heard statewide, uh, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, there were 69 campaigns that won and 134 that lost, which is pretty unprecedented. And the San Marino numbers, which is part of our district, obviously, was pretty overwhelmingly, uh, negative. Uh, it was 60% something to, like 61 to 39 or something.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had never had a, an education bond fail in our community before. But, um, yeah, there was, there were some difficult things happening.
And, and honestly, uh, Linda, I'm, I'm troubled if the surveying for the San Marino School Bond said, this is gonna be awesome, let's do it, now's the time. And they missed the mark by that much between the survey and the actual results. And again, I don't blame that on COVID-19, that was really before COVID-19.
Well, and that's my point is, even after the survey, I think we are community people and we have to be cognizant of what's happening in our communities.
Well, and I think one big difference, um, is that we actually have a fully fleshed-out facilities master plan. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but what San Marino had was a needs assessment that had some suggestions for what the district needed. But in terms of having done the type of, um, facilities plan, they, they had not had time to do that, so that also might have played a role. Um, I mean, there's a lot of things.
Well, that, that was hugely what they campaigned, the campaign against the bond was. But, you know, we saw so many, um, in, in 2018 that so many of the districts that didn't have facilities master plan and asking for a billion dollars and they all went through it. Yeah, so it just, you know, it just kind of depended on where the voters were and, boy, yeah. I, I saw cam, so much negative campaigning in my community that I had never seen before.
Uh, Trustee Martin, you're up next.
Yeah, uh, so I know we're, we're kind of running.
Comment?
Yeah.
Uh, Trustee Martin, you can go ahead.
Martin first and then Sarkisian.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so with the limited time we have left, and I know we have a, an important item coming up, or at least a review on the Seraphim financing. Um, I'd like to try to propose that maybe we can make some lemonade out of the lemons here that were given because I certainly shared that November 2020 is not going to be the right time. Um, and I think that affords us an opportunity, and especially in this rather gruesome time that we're in, to maybe approach Elmani and Pasadena about, um, where they may, because, you know, we, we know, and we've heard from Mike, and we know what's coming down on the state is going to be very, very difficult for many. And so it might be an opportune time to start a negotiation to square up that when we are ready to go, whether '22 or '24 or whenever, that, um, included in there is, uh, the opportunity to, you know, acquire some of these sites and work towards a lease purchase agreement with these two districts. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we take advantage of this time for the betterment of the district, and I ultimately believe the betterment of our general populations to, uh, work with these other districts and, uh, maybe queue up some needed resources, financial resources that they can get by selling to us and including that in the first round when we do decide to go out in the, in the future.
Uh, uh, good point. Uh, Trustee Martin, Trustee Sarkisian, you are next, sir.
Um, I'll keep it quick. I just wanted to, for point of clarification for myself. Um, in these next, so like, when, whenever we approve facilities master plans things at a meeting, at a board trustee meeting, how far into like, I guess, the, the sequence are we approving? Or are we, and, yeah. That makes sense.
So basically, the board will be looking at the entire master plan, but it's not about how much the master plan costs, it's about the master plan. How it's financed is something that will be discussed, um, either in the near future or over the next few years, looking at the finances, looking at everything that's happening in our economy. So, but the FMP is separate.
Okay, got it, thank you.
What Mike is gonna talk about is the Seraphim Building because we need to have that conversation.
Uh, Trustee Martin.
Yeah, quick answer to Trustee Sarkisian. So if you think, look at the last master plan, it, it, it's basically an approved concept on which we're gonna measure our actions in the future, similar to the way our budget is an approved plan upon which we measure our financial actions for the next fiscal year. So as we moved through our last master plan, we, we came across, you know, changes that had to occur. And those changes were basically measured against the plan. So no, we couldn't take down the whole student service building and put up a new one, which was in our original master plan. But we made a change based on that, that we could refurbish the existing bones of the ones we had. So this will be the general direction. This will be where the way that, the, the general direction the administration marches. There will for sure be changes, there'll be obstacles, there'll be detours. But everything will come back to the board in the context of, you know, we're marching in the general way, we're trying to accomplish this basic objective. Here's a little problem we're facing, here's some alternatives compared to what we had hoped to do. So I, I view that, this is what we are approving.
Got it, thank you.
I have a question for Mike. Would it be possible to cost out each phase? For example, phase one, what would it cost, phase two? Um, is that something that's doable?
It's done.
Oh, okay, okay.
I shared with the Facilities Committee, uh, I know it seems so long since we were together, but that document was shared that because we talked about needing to finance it and where I, I, I made a recommendation of doing it in two bonds because you can only spend so much money at a time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and where we would make that break in this plan based off the costs and things like that. Um, so we kind of roughed that out. But I, I wanted to, um, make sure we got to the Seraphim Building and the financing. So if we're looking at delaying a bond and to, say, March or November 2022, then we need to acquire some bridge financing for the Seraphim Building. The current estimate of the building is 68 million. The state will pay 45 million, and we'd be looking at a little over 23 million to be the district's share of the construction. Okay, so we're going to need to come up with somewhere around 23, 25 million dollars. Yet the last, um, Audit and Budget Committee, um, Trinis Wright, our banker we dealt with, with Piper Sandler, uh, joined the meeting and presented some options for a COP. That's a certificate of participation. And a COP is like a car lease. We put up a property, it could be the one we're building or it could be an existing building, and we're paying lease payments on it. And if we pay off the whole thing, it's going to go out, you know, 25 years or so. And, but you can have these, uh, COPs paid off by general bond elections if you write them into the election. So the, if we're looking at needing two, two to three years financing before there would be a general bond election, then one scenario he has is to capitalize the interest payments during the construction phase of the Seraphim Building. So for these two first years, these orange years, we would not make a payment. In 2023, our payment would be 1.8 million. And then it'd be 1.8 million through the life of the lease. It's at a 4.9% interest, but it, this has what's called a callable in it, and it's a short callable. So these COPs can be structured or negotiated to what best fits our, uh, finance needs. So we could capitalize more interest, capitalize less interest. But this would get us through our current budget struggles, which I believe will be two years. Um, and then we would start the payment. And then it would be, put it closer to an election, uh, in 2022. So this is something I'd recommend looking at, we'll bring back the details later. Um, and then it's a question of timing, when do we have to get the lease? The Seraphim Buildings in the final approval stages with the chancellor's offices, out of the Department of State Act Architecture. It's at the chancellor's office, and then from there, it gets sent to the Department of Finance. And we anticipate getting those plans ready to go for the state, ready to release their funding, um, sometime in June. We would then, we've already got permission from the board to bid out the demolition phase. And then later we'll bid out the construction. and then later we'll bid out the construction phase. So we could handle, the demolition will be roughly three million, and we have the funds to pay our share, the twenty percent of the three million. The state takes a dollar one. From the first dollar, they reimburse us eighty cents on the dollar. That's how they work. And we've put in claims as we spend the money, and they give us our eighty cents on the dollar. So sometime uh the demolition will last sixty to ninety days, and then we enter the the construction phase. So sometime when we start the demolition, we need to then start discussing a COP and initiate the transactions. We'll want Ann Roland, our bond counsel, involved with it. And then I'll, I recommend um Trenus Wright with Piper Sandler. I I think they're a good company. And he does not see any problem of doing what they call a negotiated sell on this, where he'd be able to put together the deal within two months.
So Mike, I have a question.
Yes.
Um so if, so this is dependent then that we would be able to pay off the COP on with a having the bond go through. Is that, is that what I was understanding?
That would be my recommendation, but if the bond did not go through, you'd be making the payments.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering, because this is what San Marino did, and when their bond didn't go through, it kind of put them in a bad position. So as long as we have a fallback position.
We we do. Um we have a an early retirement incentive that we were paying that was at roughly one point six million a year, and we made the last payment this year. So we we would be able to handle payments of this size in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Linda, from from my perspective, I think the way that uh we, the trustees, should look at this as, as Mike described it, as a bridge loan. And what it does is it enables us to capture and retain the state funding for the Seraphim building, not put that funding at risk. Make sure we do that, even if the climate for a bond is not uh welcoming in November, which I don't believe it will be. Um and then um let's call it a bridge loan, and it could be, you know, the the actual length of the term of this loan, you can see on the graph. It go, it goes out uh thirty years, but we would pay it off in two years to four years from a a bond proceeds, and that assumes a successful um uh bond, a ballot issue for a bond somewhere out there in in the next two to four years.
Yeah, I always assumed that we would um, we would handle the the difference um in our um our our percentage that we had to pay out with a bridge loan. I was just worried that if we were totally dependent on a bond going through in, say, twenty twenty-two, if that didn't happen, then did we have a fallback position? But I think, you know, Mike has already said, then we we have a way to cover this. So that's the only thing I was really concerned about.
This is a long-term financing, so we're not all of a sudden stuck short and having to repay this with no source of repayment. But we would want to repay it in two years or or four years out. Uh trustee Martin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. So first, I just wanted to highlight to my fellow trustees, um at least my opinion, that prior to COVID, I think Erica, Mike, and the whole team had really done a phenomenal job on a strategy here that queued up this facility master plan behind an education master plan, rolling right into what we had hoped in twenty twenty should have been a successful bond issuance. And the the amount of energy they put into that strategy, the delivering on that strategy has just been unbelievable, in my opinion.
Hmm, thank you.
And obviously, has been totally upended by um the COVID crisis, causing us now to rethink what was a brilliant strategy and well-executed just has to now be changed. As we look to what the change might be, uh I appreciate the A plan that Mike is presenting, that we know twenty twenty more than likely is off the table, and the earliest is twenty twenty-two. And even twenty-two, twenty twenty-two might, you know, who knows where we're going to be in twenty twenty-two? Uh how how much of a L-shaped recovery or a swoosh, or whatever you want to call this recovery is? It may not be the right time to go in twenty twenty-two, and it may require twenty twenty-four. And so uh though I I am in full agreement on this A plan for this bridge loan, I am concerned about the B plan that Mike proposed. And so in some ways, um I'm saying, and I'm going to reiterate what Mike just said, but I'm going to give it my own little short twist. So we've got one point six million previously that was going to prior SERP commitments in cash payments. That is not. And obviously, one point six is very close to the one point eight that we see on the chart here, which would be the amount of payment necessary in the event that our twenty twenty-two a bond, it either doesn't go on the ballot because the survey doesn't recommend it or fails. And uh if we can save the one point six in the next two years um going forward, and we're sitting on an additional three point two to add to the one point six of twenty twenty-two, we probably have good um capabilities to go all the way to twenty twenty-four if twenty twenty-two isn't looking favorable when the time allows. In that context, his plan makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm in full agreement with it. Where I'm concerned will be in the district, the trustees, the administration's resolve to hold that one point six aside at a time when we've heard of some rather dire consequences coming down in the next year uh and hear of potential cuts to the district that almost seem that some kind of reduction in force might be inescapable.
Yeah.
And in that backdrop, with that tremendous amount of pressure in doing something that this district has fought for decades to try not to do, um it and in light of increasing uh Calpers, Calsters contributions, which we do hope the state suspends, obviously, but we have no guarantee that they're going to suspend, I see immense pressure on the administration, the board, and the district to hold back our one point six as a reserve in case of twenty twenty-two doesn't work. And so, you know, I kind of have to see the tea leaves the way I see them and throw that red flag out that the B plan Mike's presenting, I think, has got a little bit of difficulty in it, unless we're about ready to sign off on what might be an extremely difficult circumstance. Obviously, we hope it doesn't come to that, but you know, that's the way the tea leaves are reading at the moment.
Well, I if I can just uh say, just be really blunt about this. If we don't go with doing this project, the state will take the money away.
And we don't want to lose that.
No question.
We do not. We have worked so hard.
No, we can't lose it.
So long, and that building has sat fallow for eight years, like
No, we we don't want to lose forty-five million.
No, and we will lose it, because the state, believe me, the best thing we could do is start drawing down and and do the demolition, because the state is going to be looking for every opportunity to scoop up money. And we do not want to give them a reason, because we're not going to be in the front of the line. You know, it's not going to be us. And the other thing to keep in mind is that we also need to get started, and we need to, you know, have a shovel go into the ground, not only to reserve the money, but also because DSA stamps on plans expire. Now, they're four-year expiration, but if you take this out and say, well, you know, we don't know about twenty twenty-two, what if we get to twenty twenty-four? If we get to twenty twenty-four and we haven't put a shovel in the ground, we have to start the DSA process all over again. We have to meet all of the current codes, which means we will have to re-engineer, you know, we'll have to have new architecture drawings. I mean, the the fact is that this alone is not going to save all of the other things we're going to have to do with the college, but the loss of forty-five million dollars really needs to be kept front and center, because that is money we will not get back.
Yeah, and and Erica, if if I could respond to what you're saying and and possibly speak for John, but definitely speak for myself, um he's not suggesting, I don't think that one of the alternatives here is not to go forward and do this COP and finance it, but I think he's making an important point, and if we can all just look at the graph. The cool thing about this financing are those two orange bars there in the next two years. And what what uh Piper Sandler calls capitalized interest, another way of saying that in more plain English is for those two years, we don't have to pay any debt service on this loan, and that's really, really nice, because we hope, knock wood, that the uh environment would be better two years out, we hope, for a bond issuance. But what John is saying, and I agree with him, what if we aren't all the way back yet, and the climate still isn't right? Now, we go to those blue and gray bars for a couple more years to get out to twenty twenty-four, and we're paying um debt service out of pocket. And I think what John might have been leading up to is this is great. We definitely should do that so that we preserve and protect and capture the forty-five million, but perhaps to make sure we we uh those orange bars there, which is is interest payments we don't have to make, but they're building up on the loan.
Right.
What we ought to do is is not spend that money on operations, but rather put it in a reserve for payment on the next two years, should that be necessary.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm saying, and I'm I'm absolutely, I don't want to lose the forty-five million. But I also need to be realistic
Mm-hmm.
about how much risk we are putting on the A plan and trying to mitigate some of that risk by saying that to set some of this aside, if not all of it, in a reserve
Mm-hmm.
in case the A plan for twenty twenty-two falters.
Right.
Or looking at the, you know, the another alternative, can we get four orange bars? And what does that cost us come?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we may have been looking at that, and it's probably in excess of two million, and that might be a lot of money to throw away in interest, so I understand that. But I'm trying to make a point to my fellow trustees and to all involved, that short of putting this aside in a very difficult time with tremendous resolve, we are really throwing some dice, some serious dice on the financial future here, so.
And John, I hate to be
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I hate to be overly conservative, but if I had to bet if the bond environment would be favorable in twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-four, I I I'm very concerned about November of twenty twenty. I almost feel like it's a non-starter, and I want to come back to that for just a minute. You know, you, Linda, you mentioned the polling at San Marino said, hey, it's great, go do it. Uh let's not hire that pollster, or let's ask ask different questions than that pollster asked San Marino, because um they they really missed the mark. And coming back to this issue, I I think that it's much more likely that the economy will have rebounded and people will be feeling uh open to paying additional property taxes more likely in twenty twenty-four than twenty twenty-two. This is just an extreme economic event that rivals uh the Great Depression, and I don't think we'll we'll even be back in two years. Uh so I think what John is talking about, not only is it a theoretical possibility, I think it's the more likely outcome. If if we could do, get this done in two years, that would be awesome. Awesome, awesome, more awesomer, right, Erica?
That's right, awesomer.
I think it's more likely it would be uh four years when the environment is right again for a bond.
And again, this is something for a future board. We're, you know, this next week, we're approving a master plan that I am just highly supportive of this master plan. And we all understand the critical nature of getting that Seraphim building going. There is a, there is a, there is a third possibility, which the committee heard heard in presentation, or I think maybe we did, or maybe we didn't, where we go to a plan of no orange bars, and we start paying on our COP immediately with a one point six. There's no need to have a reserve. We're just utilizing the money straight ahead. We'll come out ahead on saving interest. The benefit of the plan that Mike's presenting is that if we are successful in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-four, the we, in essence, we are using the GO bond to cover all of this debt, where if we start making payments immediately using the one point six in savings, two years from now, we could do a GO bond to pick up the balance, but we will have lost two years of payment at one point six that cannot be refunded through the GO bond. So
Right.
in some ways, it's a forced savings plan. On the other hand, we're we're out a million six a year without any hope of recovery, where at least this plan, we do have the hopes of the GO bond funding every single year of the COP. And so, you know, I think there's a couple of different alternatives for us to look at. But this this particular alternative, which makes a lot of sense, does require a tremendous amount of resolve in a very difficult time to set aside, in my opinion, some additional reserves in the event that twenty twenty-two isn't successful.
And uh one additional comment, and then uh definitely turn it open to other trustees' thoughts. A lot of the feedback that I got after the public forum was, why are you even looking at a facilities master plan, given the current environment today? And I think the point that we would like to make to our constituents is 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 that we want and need to have a current and updated educational master plan, technology master plan, and facilities master plan. And we need to decouple, uh when constituents ask us that question, we need to decouple the need for an FMP, and the work has been done. And if we agree with this work, uh you know, it's it's up to each of us to vote thumbs up or thumbs down, but if we think the plan is is a good plan, it's okay to vote for and approve this plan. You know, even though it's not a good environment uh right now and in November, to go out and then finance the plan. So I would just suggest, if any of you get that feedback from your constituents, make it clear that the approval of the plan is a separate event from how to finance it. And then I would just like to conclude my comments by complimenting Erica and Mike both on, you know, getting to the finish line on this facilities master plan, number one, uh and really having it well thought out. But number two, once again, Semper Gumby, having to be flexible and and recognize while we've been putting this thing together, the world has turned upside down on us. And and uh Mike coming up with a bridge loan strategy to preserve that valuable forty-five million dollars of Prop fifty-one money from the state, so we can at least get the U building done. I really commend you for 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 doing that and just um just like you've been doing operationally, having to bob and weave and adjust to what's going on and and still make these things work. So I commend you both for the master plan as as well as So I commend you both for the master plan as, as well as, as coming up with a financing plan that deals with the current realities. So thank you.
Thank you, he's a rock star.
So I agree, um, we need to decouple this from the bond. I think the FMP really supports our EMP, and that's really what we've been after. Um, so, you know, to have a strong educational master plan, serving our community and then having the capacity in our facilities to be able to, um, to serve, to support that, that EMP. I think that's what we should, that's more important for us to say. I, and I really do like that, um, you know, the, the alternatives that Mike has come up with. Although I do agree, um, and I hear what John has to say. I think, um, you know, I, I think that there's, there is some, uh, we should think about. You know, whether or not we can, it's better for us not to roll the dice in two years if we don't get the master plan, or if we don't get the bond. But I think that, um, you know, I think Mike's recommendation early on to the, uh, the committee, the FMP committee, that we break the, um, the bond up into two separate bonds, I think is much more, um, I think it's something that the community could, could digest much better than coming out with a billion dollar bond, which many districts came out with. I think it makes a lot of sense. And if in two years we find that, um, there is not an appetite for even a three hundred million dollar bond. I mean, I certainly think that they would approve a fifty million dollar bond, and maybe we do it in more than two phases if we have to do it. So that might be something that we can think about.
Yeah, breaking it up into more bite-sized pieces, there's, uh, Mike, you can weigh in on that. There's some dollar figure below which it just doesn't make sense to do these, these ballot initiatives and, and, and bond cost of issuance and all that. And I don't know what the magic number is, but I'm just gonna throw out there, it might be a hundred or two hundred million. You know, you could still go forward, but the overall costs of the ballot initiative and the cost of issuance might start to really add up on a too small of a bond.
Right, we, we'd have to look at that break even every time we looked at going forward with a bond. So we start with the need, and then we look at what the taxpayers are willing to support. And is there something that works well? It's, and I believe right now it's just not the time. But if you look at a Prop thirty-nine max out at twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand of assessed valuation. And our average home is worth four hundred and fifty thousand. We're looking at an annual bill around a hundred and twenty on an average. So if, and that twenty-five dollars of assessed valuation would raise approximately six hundred million dollars. So it raises a lot, but if we were looking at twelve dollars, you know, that'd raise three hundred million. So at some point.
Annual outlay, Mike, at that higher number, at the full max number?
The twenty-five per hundred thousand. So of an average home of four hundred and fifty, you're going to be looking at a hundred and twelve, a little less than a hundred and twenty on the tax bill.
Dollars per year.
So I, now the feeling is not one more dollar, I, I'm worried about making my mortgage.
Yeah.
But if people, if the economy's doing better to ask someone to spend, you know, a hundred to two hundred thou- two, a hundred to two hundred dollars per year to support the college, which would be a huge economic stimulus for the community, would be, I, I think it's, it's a conversation worth having with the constituents.
Uh, Trustee Chen Lau.
Oh, I agree with Mike on that front, because I do believe that, um, the San Gabriel Valley is an education district, that all of our districts, you know, are very, um, I think positive toward education and espe- and especially higher education. And if we were able to, you know, leverage the, the concept of, um, this being, and you know, economic stimulus with jobs and, um, and, and, and helping small businesses. I do think that we do have a, a chance there. You know, my daughter is in the San Marino School District. And one of the reasons, you know, I think that the, the bond failed, it was because it was a two hundred million dollar bond for, uh, for that size of a district. And the parents that came out against it actually suggested lowering the number of the bond. So they would have been okay, maybe with a seventy-five million or a ninety million bond that was similar to La Conyada School District when it passed its bond. So the number, the size of the bond, you know, certainly does matter here. And it would be interesting to see, you know, if we're gonna do this in two bonds or, you know, two phases, what those numbers would be. And if, and, and certainly if you can, um, send us, Mike, you know, the breakdown of how much each of the phase would be. Uh, I, that would be great to see.
Thank you, yeah, just, uh, yeah, go ahead, please. Trustee Brown.
This is, this is Berlinda, of course. So, um, all that's been said is actually very good in the right climate. Now, I am still going back to the, um, earlier conversation we had regarding the polls, uh, trying to find out who would be in favor of supporting a bond. Normally, like I said, in the right climate, this is fine. But during these days, and I would say, I don't see any kind of change for the next three to four years. I would actually be very insulted for someone to call me and ask me if I can, if I would agree to support the college when I'm trying to feed some, my kids. So, we, I think Linda alluded to, um, I think it was tax burnout where people were just tired of paying taxes. Well, it would be the same situation. I think you probably will get a lot of folks very upset for someone even approaching, approaching you at this point to try to pay, uh, to add something to your deal. So again, I am in agreement with us moving forward with the Seraphim building. Because it's quite obvious that we cannot let it go. But when it comes to the bond, I really think we need to just kind of hang loose and see how the economy works. And I'm really don't, I really am uncomfortable with paying out money to do another survey to know already the results. That's just my opinion, of course. Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Andrew Jonas.
If, if the board really does not want us to do a survey right now, we won't do the survey. So we take our direction from you. And, um, obviously, we have a contract with the folks, and we would just have to go back and figure out how to negotiate that contract. But, um, if you're not comfortable with that, then we won't do it. And I understand all of the reasons that you all have talked about. And, um, we certainly don't know if this is a swoosh recovery, if it's an L recovery, if it's a U recovery. I've learned more recovery modalities than I care to know. Um, but, uh, you know, we're, we are, this particular issue is at your direction. And so if your direction is, we're comfortable with the COP, we'll figure out what mechanism we want to use. But we really would prefer to not ask the question of the voters in our district, then we won't do that. It's, it's really, really, it is your decision.
And I think that's a great idea, leave them alone.
Yeah, and I think, Trustee Brown, what you're saying is, is we might be perceived to be tone deaf to our.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Point in time to go out and, and even, uh, dare to ask the question. Even if we were just surveying, you know, just to see. Yeah.
And that's fine, you know what? We, like you said, we put together this whole process, we had a whole timeline, and then COVID nineteen came along. And, you know, the best laid plans of mice and humans. And so, um, you know, we will just work with the polling company and try to figure out what our strategy is in terms of pausing it and the intervals at which we will go back and at least have dialogue with them. Um, and, you know, again, we take our direction from you.
Let me suggest that, that, uh, we'll get to Tammy and Sandra in just one moment. Um, let me suggest that, that, Berlinda, that, that is a, uh, an important thought. And, um, why don't we all think about that between now and, and our board meeting? And we can, uh, give, we can think about it more and give direction, um, at the next board meeting.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
You clarify for me, what direction are we talking about, going out with, um?
A survey.
Survey this year?
Yeah, whether or not it was a good idea to do a survey this summer, which was really.
I don't know, I'm very po- I'm very positive, I think by January, the economy, uh, will come back. If we get this.
I think you might be alone in that one, Tony.
You can survey Tony, you could survey Tony.
I just look at the political, I look at the political atmosphere and, uh,
Yeah.
Things did not look that bad.
Oh my gosh, Tony, we are not.
I'm gonna tell you, I'll tell you what I think, I look at politics, and, and we're not into the, the depression as we were with Hoover. But I just think this president would be in dire, more dire straits than what he is in, if we were, if things look horrible.
Oh my.
I think, I think by twenty twenty-two, we should think about a bond. You know, I really do.
Uh, Tammy, you were next, and then Sandra.
My question is, I'm going back to John's idea of fencing off those dollars that we're currently using to service a debt. And how can we, I, I think, I'm, uh, I guess opposite Tony right now, because I'm very concerned about this.
Very concerned, you have to realize, I'm not just saying things are bright, but I think things by January should look better, you know?
Get a life.
So how could we protect those dollars from the, the, the spectrum of, of feelings of how the economy's going to be in case we have the worst case scenario, and twenty twenty-two is still not looking good? And we need to pay two years. So how can we pro- and that's a lot of money that many entities at the college are gonna want, they're gonna see it sitting on the books. How can it be protected?
Mike, uh, Dr. Boyce, then we'll go.
Let Mike talk, yeah.
There, there are a few ways. One is to have the board formally adopt that by this year, this will be part of the budget. And then it's no longer available for negotiations or other purposes. Um, the other thing is to take the amount of money every year and transfer it to our facility capital fund. And use the one point eight million next year for capital projects. And the year after for capital projects, and then the third year, have it just go to the COP. Is a very easy way to do it. The pressure will come up is, the rhetoric will be putting buildings before people. If we have to make a, a reduction in force. And tho- those are tough decisions, and Trustee Martin is correct, it takes a lot of resolve to say our capital investment is also important, and we're gonna move forward with it. So those are the two ways to do it. I would not recommend having it build our reserves or our ending balance in the unrestricted general fund. We have a board policy that kind of outlines that. But we could make a transfer to our capital fund, which is very easy to do. Or we could say, we're going to set aside nine hundred thousand this year, one point eight million next year. We could come up with a graduated amount, and it'd be a board action, and the board would take direction, give, you know, vote on it. And then that will be the budget direction that will go into the document, and we'll put, make it part of the budget document.
And then if we don't need that cushion, it's just released?
That, then we would, let's say there is a successful election. And in twenty twenty-three, the staff would move forward and say, these are funds we no longer need that need to be re-appropriated now, what is the direction of the board? Obviously, the superintendent will have recommendations on whether it should go into the technology, whether it should go into additional staffing, um, but it would be money available for re-appropriation at that time. Whether it should go into CalPERS, CalSTRS funding.
Right, exactly.
Probably not.
And, and if I can just say, I just want to, you know, say that part of the conversation here too is that this money is going to pay for a building that will serve our students and will be state-of-the-art for our faculty to teach in. It's not going to build the Taj Mahal that is unnecessary on the campus.
There is his office, in other words.
Yeah, exactly, it's not my office, um.
And the, the last point I wanted to make, although it seems like a big number, it's one percent. It's just one percent of our unrestricted general fund.
And it creates jobs in the local community.
Okay, um, after Tammy is done, then, uh, Sandra, you're next.
So, um, my question is that we are for sure going to get that forty-five million dollars from the state, right? I mean, that's been signed, sealed, and, and, and done. And what is the timeframe that we have to spend that money? Four years, two years?
Okay, it's, it's not signed, sealed, and delivered.
Okay.
But it is at risk, and that is the urgency that I feel to start spending the money. The chancellor's office said they put it in next year's budget, so they gave us a few months more. We have been in conversations with the chancellor's office, and they wrote a justification to the Department of Finance. So hopefully, the Department of Finance does not want to take the money. But it is not signed, sealed until we start drawing it down. Once we start drawing it down, then it's a done deal. How long do we have? They would like to see it done fairly rapidly. They know how long it takes to construct a building, they're looking at roughly twenty-four months to construct that building.
So, given the budget deficit that California is gonna be in for the next year and probably the following year, would that impact whether or not we're gonna continue to get, be able to draw the, from that source?
Not the way the state works, first of all, it's, it is a Proposition Fifty-One bond money, they sold a bond to put this. So they've set that money aside, so they're not using it as a general operating. They've taken the forty-five million, they've set it aside, and then we can draw it down on it. The Department of Financing is looking at recouping any unused grants. So they could be, for cash purposes, want to sweep everything up, so they have cash to spend. But it, it, it's not, I, I don't want to say, it, it's not like a grant out of the ju- Prop ninety-eight money, that's very much at risk. This, this is different money, but, you know, until we start spending that first dollar on construction, soon as they get, they move us from planning to construction, we can start drawing it down, then we're good to go. It's no longer at risk.
Yeah, so I, I agree, we need to start spending this down, it's part of the chancellor's message. It's been part of the budget message last week, it's gonna be the chancellor's message this, um, in the upcoming Board of Governors meeting of, of the state of the system. So I think that we continue to be at risk if we don't start on this. I, I absolutely think we need to go forward, and I like the idea then of using the bridge loan to, um, to finish up the partnership um, that we are required to do to get this money. Uh, I am a little worried that, about any, any perception that we are, we are holding up cushioning funds in anticipation, even when we tell this to faculty. You know, when people are in, um, when they're hurting, and they feel like, you know, they can't make their mortgage, or they can't feed their kids. Any perception that we are holding back a cushion of funds for any amount of time, I think is, puts us in a, um, it's bad optics, so I think we need to, it, it's one of the reasons why I think John's recommendation may make some sense for us to really look at.
Yeah, agreed. And and I I think the the proper way to handle that is to have that be part of the bridge loan, COP proposal, Erica and Mike, that you submit to us, that that this money, you can describe it as 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 necessary, but just, that just comes hand in hand with the financing. If 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 we're, we're not going to do the financing unless we do that. And just, and just leave it at that. That's a necessary part of the financing.
And the other thing, too, is in difficult times, and and I've been involved in building projects in difficult financial times, the reality is that the forty five million dollars we get from the state can't be used for anything other than building. Like, it doesn't, it it does not change the facts of what the forty five million dollars is. It can't pay for humans. It only can pay to build a building.
So in the plan that that we're going to approve, the facilities master plan, is the cost gonna accompany the plan, or we're we're gonna, we're not going to show the cost in the plan that's going to be approved by the board?
The cost is not the master plan.
No, because the cost will change.
But what we were, the original direction I was given in the charge by the superintendent was to develop a facility master plan to determine the cost of implementing that master plan and then determine the political climate for a bond. Those were the three things that I was supposed to be able to present to the board, and I'm a month late on the facilities plan and the cost. And then we were also hoping at this time to present the survey results. So then the board could deliberate on whether or not you want, by August first, you'd have to make a decision to put something on the November ballot. Then we ran into COVID nineteen, so my direction has slightly changed. Let me slide for a whole month on presenting the facility master plan. The cost is available, but that's a separate from the plan. Already shared it with the facilities committee, no reason not to share it with the entire board. I don't know, think it has to be an agenda item. It could just be, I'll give it to Dr. Endra Janus, and she could distribute it. It's, it's pretty straightforward costing document of every phase.
Trustee Sarkisian.
I just want to say the fact that Dr. Bush can make all of this, like, digestible to me with my, like, only economic education high school, he deserves like a ten year position at PCC.
Well, that's because Erica will be with us till twenty thirty then.
To get an office done.
The trustees are slowly laying the bricks for the next.
I know, I can see that. What they're saying is they're gonna take me out in a pine box is what they're saying.
No, I know we're almost done here, but Alex, I have a text message that I got from somebody that's watching on YouTube, and it says that they're no longer accepting public comment. Is that the case?
Yeah, public comment ended at the beginning of the meeting. This, and it's a little different than when we did the town hall because that wasn't a noticed meeting. But this is a noticed meeting, and you took your public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So that, and there, it was never, it was never arranged or assumed that we would be taking public comment throughout the meeting, even though it's a study session, it's your study session.
Okay, Alex.
I do want to say, I have, I have put my email address in the chat box of the YouTube stream, so people can email me if they have questions they want to follow it up on.
Okay, great, thank you.
We're always happy to follow up on questions, but in engaging people is, you didn't find this for that.
So we've, we've run long here, but we've covered a lot of really important business. Dr. Bush, Dr. Endra Janus, do we have more to cover, or are we, have we covered everything?
No, I think we've covered everything. The FMP will be on the board agenda next week for your approval. And then, Mike, do you want to say something about the whole COP? What's the timing of having that discussion?
We're, soon as we get notification that we're moving into the construction phase, we will then bid the demolition, which you've already authorized. So when we award the demolition bid, we'll also, whatever meeting that is, we'll be finalizing our conversation on the COP. And I'll invite bond counsel to the meeting and probably Mr. Wright again to to work out, you know, what the board legally needs to do. Before then, we'll have conversations with the Audit and Budget Committee on the best structure. Because there's technicalities on capitalizing interest versus the call period and all different puts and takes. But we'll get the best one designed for the district. And so whatever the state starts the process, we'll, we'll then kick off the COP.
Great. And and again, thank you, in addition, though, but thank you for having a strategy to start demolition as quickly as possible so we can lock in and secure that forty five million dollars of Prop fifty one money. That's super important. So, so thank you for that, too.
So Erica, would it be possible to give us some talking points, you know, about how we can talk about the building and how we're paying for the building at some point in time, so that we're all?
In time, once the, once you all have done a final decision, then we, then we could do that, and they could be talking points that are on our website. And you would have them, plus they would be available to other people.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay, if if we're all done here, if we have no further questions, I'm going to thank everybody for staying late, and and I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Bush, in particular.
Dr. Bush?
Yes?
On this Friday, I'm going to be having an ad hoc, I'm having an ad hoc committee meeting with some members to discuss the FMP. Three of the trustees will be attending, and anyone else who has questions will be emailing me and such. But I wanted to ask if if you're free, or Dr. Lebo, either of you wanted to join in, you're free.
If you could send me the information, I'll see if I can.
I know both of you are celebrities nowadays, so if you can fit into your schedule, let me know.
All right.
Let me know, Alex, I can do it as well.
Thank you.
Bye bye.